Six thirty. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, undeniably, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, do I approve the minutes of Monday, February twenty-second?
So moved.
I'll second that.
John?
Yes.
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 Okay, before we start tonight, I would like to first say welcome to Tom Mayo for being back.
Thank you.
And unfortunately, this will be his last selectmen's meeting. We'll be moving on.
Yes.
We will miss him.
Thank you, everyone. This is a, it's been a real pleasure to serve the people and the taxpayers of Mashpee for ten years. And it's a job I took very seriously and I'll miss the people in this town. This isn't a decision I made lightly. So thank you to Town Manager Collins and the board for all your support over the years. I appreciate it.
And we wish you the best.
We do.
Thank you.
Good luck, Tom.
Thank you.
And we're minus one board member tonight who's a little under the weather, but will be, will be back on his feet. Okay, public comment. And we're a little early for our first hearing, so why don't we go down to, if you don't mind, to see some...
Under new business?
Yes, under new business. For the approval of two requests for one-day liquor license on March nineteenth and April sixteen, the Whamperug Gun Rod and Gun Club. Good evening. And everything all set?
Make a motion, we approve the requested license from March nineteenth and April sixteen, two thousand sixteen.
I'll second that motion.
John?
Yes.
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 Right. Thank you. You're very welcome. We'll go on to approval of appointment to the environmental oversight committee for Caitlin.
Yeah, I'm on the environmental oversight committee and we're in need of a member. And our new assistant conservation agent, Caitlin Catterett, has been attending and contributing on a regular basis already and expressed an interest in joining the committee. And so I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Caitlin Catterett to the environmental oversight committee.
I'll second that motion.
John?
Great girl.
Yes.
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 All right, good. And we still have a few more minutes.
Could do me?
Tom, do you want to?
Sure.
Communications and correspondence, real quick.
Okay, so we have on the agenda a discussion relative to the Mashpee Reset Project. I'm just going to give a very brief overview of what was done and then a couple of, a couple of ideas on what we should do going forward. So the Reset Project is the Regional and Economic Strategy Executive Team Project. It's the product of a technical assistance that the town of Mashpee requested of the Cape Cod Commission, paid for using district local technical assistance grant funds. This project focused on five study areas. The project area analysis, which is the section researched the development redevelopment potential of four commercial corridors in Mashpee. A Chapter H assessment, which analyzed the potential for raising the square footage threshold that triggers Cape Cod Commission review as a development of regional impact. The third area was a hotel feasibility study, where the commission hired Pinnacle Advisory Group to conduct a hotel feasibility study to assess the market for further hotel development in the upper Cape region. The fourth area was in infrastructure funding. This is an area where the town had requested and the commission provided several pages of loan suggestions or grant ideas to the town for things like funding different infrastructure projects. And then a fiscal impact model was performed by Tishal Bice for the town. The next steps for economic development, in particular with regards to this Reset Project, is that the EDIC will review this on March eighth at their meeting, this, this report. The, we are going to, at that meeting, hopefully at that meeting, if not, if they're not available, the commission's not available, we'll do it at another meeting. But we'll meet with the commission to discuss the accuracy and completeness of the study. And we'll make every effort to do this before I leave, just so you're aware. And then the last point I wanted to make is I'm going to recommend to the, to the Mashpee EDIC that an in-depth review of the zoning bylaws of the town of Mashpee be reviewed from an economic development standpoint and probably funded by the Mashpee EDIC. So that'll be a recommendation I make to them.
The idea would be just after we get all the comments in, clean this report up and then have the commission come back and present to the board, to us.
Right.
But we just, you know, want to make sure that people have been working directly with them are satisfied with the study area and the accuracy and there are any technical errors or omissions, so that we can just talk about what they found as opposed to talk about, you got this wrong, you got that wrong.
Yeah, I have, I'm just reviewing it, I have some questions and maybe I'll touch base with Tom.
Yeah, I would say, you know, over the next week, ten days before Tom leaves, anybody in the board has comments, we can funnel them through Tom.
Yep, our meeting is on March eighth. We're going to invite Phil Daskin of the commission to come to that meeting and review it with him there. If you could get me your comments prior, like even a couple of days prior, I might be able to preempt some of the discussion with Phil in a phone call, so we can make the EDIC meeting a bit more effective.
I'll try to get that during this week.
That would be really great, yeah. John, if you have anything as well, anybody?
Great.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Can I bring up one other item and correspondence? I hand it around to the board, I got an email from a resident in town raising some concerns about the use of moorings from out-of-town residents for jet skis on John's Pond. And I know he's had some interaction with the waterways committee about the issue, you know, ultimately, the mooring jurisdiction either falls within town meeting to say whether you have to be resident or not of town, or the placement of moorings and any rules and regulations go with the harbor master. Obviously, we're in a transitional period with a harbor master now. I did suggest to Mr. Cottrell to bring this to the board's attention. It seems worthy of something we ought to deal with. And so I told him we'd bring it up tonight, discuss it initially. You know, if we decide to go the bylaw route, we still have a little bit of time to put something on the warrant we haven't finalized yet. So I don't know whether that's something we can work with. When's council coming back into town again? Is this something we could refer to Pat, ask him to?
We could, but I mean, I think the first thing we're going to do is research the regulations and the bylaws that he's claiming are applicable. And then I think we also should probably discuss it at a future meeting, because I don't know the impact that it may have to some folks that may want to come to a meeting like this and have a seat.
Yeah. So maybe, between you guys, maybe take a little, take the next couple of weeks and we'll get to what, what's, what's in effect, what our options are.
We'll have a follow-up for you.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that, has the harbor master seen this?
We don't have, we don't have one yet. We were in the hiring process.
The test is tomorrow.
Yeah. So that's the problem. It's like, you know, you don't have, you know, a change of any significance like this, you'd really want your harbor master to have a say in it. And we haven't had a permanent harbor master since August.
End of the season.
End of the season. So that's kind of, it's a little bit caught between the cracks. And Mike was feeling kind of frustrated, so I told him I'd bring it up and have at least put it into the manager's realm to, to see what's, what's what and give us some clarity on what, if anything, we ought to do about it, or ask the town to do about it come spring.
And I don't know any of the particulars, so I'm going to have to gather the particulars and then go from there. And we may reach out to former harbor master and just ask him for some information, give us some information. I can get that straight from Captain Santiago. I'm not worried about that so much as just understanding what the real problem is. Judging from just looking at this, it appears as though he doesn't want out-of-towners to have a warrant on John's Pond. Right, that's what I see as well. That's at the core of it. Along with some recklessness.
Yeah, and I think the recklessness issue and the, you know, it's an issue, you know, we dealt with it, the Mashpee Wake Beach Committee dealt with it by, you know, working with some of the affected landowners, the trustees to restrict access to their property. They wanted to restrict access to the use of day trippers, jet skis in particular, causing to their property. That solved the problem by and large over Mashpee Wake Beach. But, you know, it's like you squeeze a balloon, you know, the problem goes someplace else. Some portion of the problem is at John's Pond.
I was just going to say, the, the real core problem here is not just attributed to John's Pond.
No. The nature, the nature of jet ski use is problematic.
Test him.
So, anyway, if we could maybe, you know, in the next, next meeting, have a follow-up on this.
Fourteenth?
Yeah, whenever it is.
I think it's the fourteenth. Is that quick? Fourteenth? Is that right? Fourteenth?
Do we meet every week now?
Fourteenth.
Thank you.
Okay, it is eight forty.
Oh, I just had one under correspondence. The town treasurer wanted me to announce, don't shoot the messenger, excise tax bills were mailed yesterday.
Okay, eight forty.
I'll be running to the mailboxes for that one.
The Mashpee Board of Selectmen acting as the licensing board for the town of Mashpee will conduct a public hearing on the application of, I need to pronounce your name. Banu? Banu? And how do you say your last name? Okay. Sole proprietor and manager of BND Dollar Saver Convenience for a convenience store annual wine and malt beverage license located at four oh one Nathan Ellis Highway, Unit Six and Seven, Mashpee, Mass. Said hearing will be held on Monday, February twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen, at six forty in the Warcoy Room at Mashpee Town Hall, sixteen Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. And you can come up and...
Can you describe the business a little bit?
So I'm, I'm a selectman and I address everybody. Good evening to everybody right now. My name is Banu Pokharel. So B-A-N-U, P-O-K-H-A-R-E-L, because I'm repeating my every letter, because it's hard to understand everybody, because I'm not from here. My origin is from Asia. I'm Asian. And recently, almost one year ago, I became U.S. citizen by neutralization from the Boston. And I'm doing this business from last June. I bought that business, that was Dollar Saver or Dollar Saver, some store over there. And I bought that business from other guy. And I just converted that Dollar Saver store to a convenience store. So people can access easy for common item, like a milk, bread, candy, water, and some tobacco items too. Over there, I'm doing business, it's not a bad, but it's hard to survive over there, because my rent is a little bit high. I got a little bit more space. And I came to Town Hall for seasonal license for a malt beer and wine license. And suddenly, I know over here, there is a quota left to apply for the annual license for that one. So it's for my survival and for other things, for my kids, for my family, I have to make a little bit of money, so I can put a little bit of food on the refrigerator and dining table. So that is for me and for the community too, so that they can get a little bit competitive price on each and every items. So over there, I'm doing business from like six or seven months. And I think from the neighborhood over there, customers are happy with me. They appreciate for my customer service and for my other things too. So actually, I'm not proficient in English language, but a little bit what I know, what I learned from here, so I'm describing myself. And this is my request for the selectmen, from the selectmen's and for everybody to please give me some help and give me some support, so I can survive over here. So thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for? Do we have anybody from the audience for or against? No? I need a motion to close.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing?
Second that motion.
John?
Yes.
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 Yes. Secondly, make a motion, we approve the license request as made?
I'll second that motion as well.
John?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Best, best of luck.
We have our next hearing at six fifty. Do you have any other liaison reports? Yeah, but I have one more hearing at six fifty. You have any liaison reports?
Not that everybody doesn't know.
I'm good. It was just last week we...
I think everybody knows what happens with this, what happened at the school committee, so.
Yes.
The Mashpee Board of Selectmen acting as licensing board for the town of Mashpee will conduct a public hearing on the application of Darby's National Market LLC, doing business as Organic Market. Debbie Zurich, Darby Zurich, manager for the supermarket, annual wine and malt beverage license located at thirty-two Market Street, Mashpee, Mass. Said hearing will be held on Monday, February twenty-ninth, six fifty in the Warcoy Room at Mashpee Town Hall, sixteen Great Neck Road North. Hi, Roy.
Hi, how are you?
We're good. You want to give us a little bit of?
Sure. So for anybody that doesn't know, we operate a full-service natural products and organic grocery store inside the commons. We're just under four thousand square feet, and we're just looking to add a small four-foot section of organic and biodynamic wine and a three-foot craft beer gluten-free organic beer cooler. So very small, but just to make it more full-service. If you're coming in to get stuff for dinner, you can grab a bottle of wine or beer or whatever. So, yeah, we're keeping it very small, but I think the brands that we do carry will be really high-quality and specialty.
Very good.
That's a great idea. Organic beers and wines and organic store, right?
Yep, right.
Any comments from the audience?
No. I make a motion, approve.
But to close the public hearing.
Oh, sorry. Close the public hearing.
She's tough. She's real tough.
Do I have a second? John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
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 Now, do I have a motion for approve?
Yes, you do. I have motion approved, liquor license for Darby's. Organic. Markets, natural, Darby's Natural Markets LLC.
Do I have a second? John?
Yes.
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 Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I'll have to come down and try some.
Yes, yeah. We'll bring, we're not allowed to bring examples.
You can, you don't have to.
If you want to.
Thank you.
Classic.
That was.
Hold out for more time.
Okay, our next is, we must start for our seven o'clock is our update with Representative David Viera.
David?
Much shorter than the previous speaker here. Madam Chairman, members of the board, thank you. Just trying to make the annual rounds to all of the boards. I had an opportunity last week to meet with the Falmouth Board and the Bourne Board. Just update on a few things that we're working on and talk a little bit about the state budget process, and then to just have an open dialogue of things that the board might be interested in, in having conversation on, or things that, so to speak, you want to put on the radar screen. But I'd like to start by thanking Tom for his service to the town of Mashpee as he prepares for his new venture. Tom's been very focused, as you know, on the economic development issues, not only with the solar program that you have out at the landfill, but also working with the EDIC and its future. We've had a number of conversations and meetings and sharing information. So, Tom, good luck as you move forward, and we look forward to welcoming someone into your shoes that really has a focus, that can help the new town manager focus on the economic development issues as the, as the commission continues to work forward.
Thank you very much, Dave.
So where are we at? Cherry sheets are out, at least the budgeted cherry sheets. I'm sure you've all had an opportunity to take a quick peek at those. The governor has shown an increase in the discretionary local aid, as well as the Chapter Seventy local aid. The one area where we did not see an increase that affects the town of Mashpee is in the pilot payments, the payment lieu taxes. And so for those of us that host facilities owned by the Commonwealth where pilot payments are made, will be working through the budget process to see if we can edge that number up from, from where the House Two proposal is. There's also discussions about what we can do with Chapter Seventy and what we can do with the educational aid, and some of you might be familiar with the, the Foundation Budget Review Commission that just reported out. And I always said, be careful what you wish for, because for our communities here on the Cape, who are contributing greater than a foundation budget, if the foundation formula changes in statute and there isn't a new pool of money to fund the gaps between the new foundation budget and what your community pays per capita, per student, per pupil for education, that means there's going to be shifting of money. And so my concern and the reason why I did not support the initial budget review commission without it looking at the formula as well, which it didn't, it was just the foundation formula, was because my concern is that we'll raise the minimum requirement throughout the Commonwealth and then we'll shift money and take more money off Cape and send it to the cities that need the money. So that's a concern that I have, a concern that a lot of my colleagues still have. And so as we move through the budget process, we will be talking about what we can do to enhance Chapter Seventy to our communities, but we need to do that in light of the recommendations that came out of the Foundation Budget Review Committee and making sure that it's not just a shifting of those resources from communities that get a certain amount now to communities that, under a new formula, would, would be required to pay more per pupil. So that's something that, that we're keeping our eyes on. Last year, Falmouth did a home rule petition, and we were dealing with our sewer program in the Little Pond Sewer Area, and we wanted to try to lessen the impact to the taxpayer as much as possible. And so we did a home rule petition to the legislature where we asked, could we bond out these sewer projects for thirty years rather than twenty? Could we make these betterments equal payments rather than the balloon payments at the beginning that were traditionally there? And could we pass on a zero percent interest to the homeowner if the community were able to get a zero percent interest through the state revolving fund? Previous statute said balloon payments at the beginning, no more than twenty years, and you had to pass on at least one percent. So if you got zero, it would be one, if you had two, it would be three. So we were able to get the home rule petition passed, and there was enough dialogue around that, that Representative Madden, actually as the lead sponsor, my colleague from Nantucket, but also represents the town of Falmouth, brought forward a petition to the legislature to make this a local option bill. And it is Chapter One of the Acts of two thousand sixteen. So this betterment mechanism, as the town of Mashpee looks forward to your wastewater solutions, is something that you can look at, you can bring forward to your municipality to adopt Chapter One of the Acts of two thousand sixteen, to be able to broaden the term of those loans, pass on the lowest interest as possible to your, to your constituents, and also get rid of the balloon payments at the beginning. So just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. The governor just, just signed that this past month. Will's Work Road, it seems like every time I come here, we talk about Will's Work Road.
Ask about it.
Yeah, so we've been talking about fixing it, and we've been talking about having a common entrance off of, off of the paved access that goes down to South Cape Beach, to redirecting all of that. And Senator Wolf, in the Senate of the Environmental Bond Bill debate, led to charge for an earmark, which we were able to support and retain in the House conference. And so we do have an earmark for some work out at Will's Work Road. But now you have to get into the capital plan in order for the administration to bond any monies that were in the environmental bond bill. So at the end of this summer, I invited DCR to come down. We had Deputy Commissioner Sisk and the DCR Governor Affairs Director, Tony Barletta, and the Director of Legislative Affairs for the Secretariat, Stoli Singleton, came down, met with members of the South Cape Beach Advisory Committee, and Jim Rasmann and John Singleton from Webner. We toured the facility, toured the site, had a meeting. They couldn't believe when we were telling them what happens there. He's like, well, how many cars? You know, you got like twenty or thirty cars out here? Like, try eighty. And they're looking at the road and that, there's eighty cars parked out here? Like, yeah, try to get an ambulance down here if there's an emergency. So they really enjoyed the site visit, because it was just sort of this, oh, fix a road, redirect an entrance. And when they got out there and actually saw how tight that location is and what condition the road is in, even after, we were able, two years ago, to get the temporary upgrade to the road. So we're working now to try to get that phased into the capital plan sometime this summer, around July, there'll be a five-year capital plan. This administration, when it took office, decided to do a one-year capital plan until they could sort of see all of the projects and look at the bonding and the debt levels of the Commonwealth. And so we only had a one-year capital plan this year. This summer, we're, we're expecting a four- to five-year, which is traditional five-year capital plan to come out. So we'll continue to advocate for that, and I know that Senator Wolf will continue to advocate that. I know he's not seeking reelection, he won't be back, so whoever becomes our new senator, we'll make sure we get them out to Will's Work Road as well, because obviously, this is going to be a long-term project.
David, do you know if DCR is going to actually submit that as part of their capital plan request, the administration? Because last year, under previous commissioner, there was a fair amount of indifference to this project.
Yeah. So that, that was the purpose of the site visit, because they don't, they don't necessarily tell us exactly what they're going to pipe up the line, and they're just starting, February, just starts the capital plan process. So they're putting our requests side by side and looking at other requests. So the real, a big angle for us on this request was the public safety issues relative to the utilization of the beachfront and access getting in and out of there. So, so we don't have a definitive commitment from them, but we did, as I said, made them come down and actually take a look at it firsthand. And they said, thank you, because they said, a lot of these things we're doing administratively, we never really see what it is. And so when we made the offer, they were more than willing to come down, so they could put it into perspective. If I get any additional information as we move forward, prior to the release, I'll let you know. But it might be of value. I know you did this in the past. The board did put a request just after the vote of the capital bond bill, and that was for Governor Patrick in August fifth of two thousand fourteen. It might be of value for the board to take a position again in advocating for this to be in the, the new capital plan and to send a letter to the governor and the Secretary of Environmental Affairs, Matthew Beaton.
And also, I think, maybe, Rodney, if you could whip out a letter like that, and maybe, and also Leo Roy is the new commissioner.
Yep.
I don't know if you've had dealings with Leo. He's been in and out of state government over the years.
Yeah, I, I would also, I would put it out to, to Secretary Beaton as well, because the, the capital requests get consolidated through the departments, and then the, the request comes from the Secretariat. So Mr. Roy will put in his DCR priorities to the commissioner's, to the secretary's office, and then the secretary will put the environmental requests as a whole to the administration of finance.
By viewing the project, do you, you get the sense that they'll push it up on the list?
I, I think so. We, our conversations at Webner, we met at Webner first, and we were talking about this, and like, you know, we got a lot of roads all over the state, and some, some of them are paved roads, highways in the city of Boston are DCR territory, Stero Drive. So they're having these conversations, oh, there's a lot to do out there, you know, and then they get out there, and I'll never forget when we got to the end and we parked, Deputy Commissioner Sisk goes, eighty to a hundred people in the summer? He was just, couldn't believe it with what he saw out there. So it was an aha moment for them. The question is, how many other aha moments have they had across the Commonwealth?
The representative's right, they did come to that meeting, were kind of like, yeah, we got a lot of stuff that's more important. And I mean, they definitely were dampening expectations when they walked in the room. I think you did a good job turning them around.
Like, do we still have time to go out there? I'm like, oh, oh, yes, we definitely have time to go out there. That was the whole, the whole purpose was to get them out there, so. And Mr. Gottlieb was representing the board at the, at the site visit as well.
I'll have a letter prepared for the board for March fourteenth, and then I'll touch base with Representative Viera and others to find out how many people this really needs to go to. And we'll hit them all.
Yes, definitely.
And I'll give you a copy of the previous letter, just, I know it's in the file somewhere, but I'll just give it to you before I leave here tonight. So another one, another project that we're working on, we haven't, haven't had it released from a committee yet, but there's a House bill that Town Clerk Deb Damien and I have been working on. One of the things that she's looking at is civil fine enforcements of bylaw violations in the town. And there are, I don't have the exact number with me tonight, but there are tens of thousands of dollars of unpaid civil fines in Mashpee. And so she's been talking to colleagues around the Commonwealth, and in some cities, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. And there really was... really, with all of the try, the ability to go to the court and try to get some type of an attachment, the civil enforcement, it's really difficult to do that. And so we worked together and drafted, and we actually had Town Clerk Deb Damien come to Boston to sit with House counsel to actually draft the language of the bill, to empower the registrar upon notification by municipality for the non-payment of a civil fine, to be able to not allow the renewal of a registration or driver's license. And we know that doesn't catch everybody, but it would catch a lot of folks that all of a sudden, when they go to renew their license, they're told, well, you can't do that until you go back to the town hall and you take care of your civil penalty. And I know that the chief, coming from law enforcement, knows that we have some civil penalties for the use of marijuana, which was decriminalized in Massachusetts. And there are some communities where the police department says, forget it, we're not even going to write those citations anymore because they know if they don't pay them, if they don't pay them, nothing happens. And so why do we even bother with it? And so it's sort of a bigger issue as you look at areas that don't even try to issue the fines because they've gotten so sort of sick of it. But there's also a parity thing here for those that have violated the same municipal ordinance or bylaw, bylaw in the case of a town, knowing that, oh, then nobody's going to come after me, so I'm not going to pay it. And those that pay up and learn their lesson and move forward. So it's in committee. She came up and testified. We had a hearing a few months ago, but we are waiting for the committees by the end of this month, by, actually by the middle of the month, to either release the bills that are in committee or to file extension orders as they do additional research. So it's House Bill 3546. It's an act relative to civil fine enforcement, and that might be something, I talked to Deb this morning, as she was running around setting up for the election tomorrow, about potentially weighing in the board. And she's got some specific data of the amount of money that hasn't been collected in the town of Mashpee that might be of value if you so choose.
Quite a bit of money.
Yeah, and it adds up year after year.
I know that Town Clerk's been a strong supporter of this bill, and I believe the chief also wrote a letter in favor of it. But the bottom line is, it's a good start. And I think you'd capture a lot of folks if they couldn't renew their license or their registration.
Registration, yeah.
Hopefully, we can get that through.
Just seems so obvious, but it's a no-brainer.
We just got to get it out of committee.
Yeah.
And there seems to be resistance, Dave?
It's not necessarily resistance. It's things that get more noise, get more action. And so, you know, Deb and I have made a lot of noise, and we went to the hearing and sent letters after. And so the more noise we can get tomorrow, I believe it's tomorrow, the Mass Municipal Association Board is reviewing this. She's brought it to them. The Clerk's Association has put it out to their members as well throughout the Commonwealth, the municipal clerks. So hopefully that we'll get more calls and letters to the committee to release the bill.
Good. Nice, Dave.
Last couple of things that I had on my, I list, one is opioid bill. You've heard a lot about the governor's proposals in the House and the Senate, and so that the bill right now is in conference. And one of the things that impressed me with the work that's happening here, and we brought this forward to the Attorney General, was the town of Mashpee, your police department, is working in collaboration with the Falmouth Opioid Coalition. They have a, we have a subgroup of that group on illegal supply. And there's an interagency agreement between the two police departments based on where we've seen illegal supply moving. Mashpee tends to be a connector for Falmouth, more so than the town of Bourne, and so they're working closely together. And so when the Attorney General just appointed a task force at the state and federal level, we've got members of DEA and FBI and the state police working. After the state of the Commonwealth address I mentioned to her, hey, I've got two municipalities that have an interagency agreement. Is there any room for dialogue about what we can do working with you? And so she was very impressed with that, that two separate municipalities were working together like that. And so that's an ongoing dialogue that we're having to see what, if any, resources the statewide task force under the Attorney General could provide to Mashpee and to Falmouth as they continue to work together.
That's great, David.
Sure is.
The other one-
Any idea on the timing on that conference?
Yeah, we're hoping, we're called in the House for session, not this Wednesday, but next Wednesday, and then not the following Wednesday. So I'm hoping we can come to resolution and see a bill come out at the end of this week for next week. Otherwise, it would be pushed off at least till the end of the month. But the conference, as you know, are not public, so we don't really know exactly how far they are. We know they're meeting. That's good, because sometimes it's like, well, when are they going to meet? When are they going to meet? They have been meeting, they have been engaged. Proposals have been going back and forth. One of the big ones, as you know, is the, is the hold, whether or not there's a change to the Section 35 laws, and if they're going to do a 72-hour hold, and is it in a hospital, or are you transferred somewhere else and all that. So one of the things that I worked on, and we had bipartisan 29 cosponsors, was to extend a protective custody law so that we at least have a short-term hold, that when your EMTs, and I had an experience two years ago, Mashpee was telling me about a transport to the hospital where the patient jumped out of the ambulance at the Sally Port and ran off, and nobody could do anything, because it's like, they have civil rights, and off she went, and there was nothing they could do. Now, if that individual was intoxicated by alcohol, the police could go and put that individual in protective custody, either bring them back into the hospital in a protective custody or back to the station, depending on the most appropriate hold for that individual. Those laws are so old, they specifically say intoxication with alcohol. And so we can't use those statutes. So we were able to get, we actually got a little more in the House version than I expected. I wanted to say, if you have been administered Narcan, so we have an absolute trigger, because it's hard to test for drugs that you can't smell on the street. You ask a police officer, is that person under the influence? Well, with the alcohol, I can do a breathalyzer test. I can kind of see, do a field sobriety test, and I can smell the alcohol. I know what's going on with the drugs. How do you know? So we were looking for an absolute trigger. And so my proposal was, if you've been administered Narcan, you immediately are subject to the availability of protective custody. The chairman of the Judiciary Committee, John Fernandez, actually wanted to go further and say, after conducting a field sobriety test and looking at the scene and the situation, you will be able to extend protective custody for the suspected use of drugs based on this field sobriety test and everything else. They were able to, we were able to get, yeah, we were able to get that language. And so my 29, or actually 28 of my 29 cosponsors, signed on to that, and we brought it forward. And so that's been a big piece right now of the discussion, because it wasn't in the Senate bill. The governor, we've already spoken with, the governor thinks it's a good idea. We just hadn't sort of circled all the wagons and brought that proposal to him before he submitted his bill. And so he's willing to sign that portion of the bill if it makes it in there. So-
David, sorry, just, is that going to be both language?
No, so it will be, you do the field sobriety test. So if you have administered Narcan, someone has at that scene, all of the other sort of elements of being able to say that that individual is suspected to be under the, under the influence.
So it's either/or will work. Okay.
I didn't think we could quite go that far, but when the chairman of Judiciary started to get some movement, we said, all right, I'll get my guys behind your thing. So we, it was, it was an interesting afternoon that day.
Currently, for the protective custody, if it's suspected that the person's under the influence of alcoholic beverages, the peace officer would be obligated to offer the breath test. The person doesn't have to accept it, but they have to offer it up. So if they weren't drunk, they would have to be released. So it's interesting to listen to the dialogue relative to the suspicion of a person being under the influence of drugs.
It's difficult. I mean, we met with the Mass Chiefs a few months back, and we're trying to figure out what's-
There's a lot of challenges for the-
What's the new standard going to be, you know?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
That's all I'm pointing out.
Maybe the, maybe the fallback position is the Narcan administration. I don't know. We might be the fallback position. Who knows what happens in conference.
At least it's something.
So.
Get a new vote.
But I, the day, the day, I actually introduced this on the fentanyl bill, and I knew it was outside the scope, because the fentanyl bill was just adding fentanyl to the trafficking statute. And so this, you know, you have these conversations with leadership as you're getting ready to start the session, and the speaker said, look, this is beyond the scope, you know. And I said, well, Mr. Speaker, I know it's beyond the scope. I said, but can I get up and talk about it? Because as I talk to my colleagues in the House, they go, well, why don't they just put him in, under protective custody? They just didn't realize that we couldn't do it. I said, so can I raise the issue, withdraw it, and I'll bring it back when we get to the larger opioid bill? And he said, okay. So I got up and I, and I said, just, this was on a Wednesday debate. Tuesday's Falmouth Enterprise, a weekly update comes out, the electronic, and it was talking about a woman who was at Papa Gino's with an infant child, had overdosed in the parking lot. Her friend had called 911. They came, administered Narcan to the mother, put her in the ambulance, had IVs in. DCF came to pick up the child at the site, and she refused to be transported to Falmouth Hospital. And she ripped the IVs out of her arm and was physically trying to get out of the back of the ambulance. And over a course of time, they were able to talk her down and convince her that it was in her best interest to go to the hospital, but had no authority to make her, to take her to the hospital. If she wanted to get out of that ambulance, she had every legal right to do that. And luckily, after a period of time, they were able to convince her. They re-administered the IVs, and they transported to Falmouth Hospital. But this was, this was like the day before. And, you know, as I see this issue and I hear from police officers, firefighters, and EMTs, you know, that are constantly like, what do we do? What do we do? What do we do? And here it was, just that week, that it was right here, happening in our backyards. So we'll continue to do what we can to move that forward, and I'm hoping to see that bill, I'm hoping to see it next Wednesday, but if not, I know it's on its way shortly.
Does either bill do much, either your version or the Senate version, or the governor's version for that matter, do much meaningful in terms of increasing the number of beds there are for treatment? It's great to hold somebody for 72 hours if they're just going back in the environment they were in.
Sure. So the, so the increase of beds is actually a commitment that we've seen in the previous and in the current proposal in the budget. So in the budget, we're looking at, I think it's 48 additional beds in Taunton and 100 and some odd more throughout the state and other locations. So the incremental increases, and there's a, I think it was a three-year proposal by Secretary Sutter's as to how do we ramp up the additional beds. So those are, those are the treatment beds. And so this period of, of, what do they call it? The intake piece. The question is, how do we deal with that? Is it going to be right in the emergency room, or is there, because that's what the hospitals were worried about. Are we going to clog up the hospital rooms, particularly if it's a longer term, up to 48 or 72 hours? How are we going to do that? So then the longer-term treatment beds, which there clearly is a shortage of, I had, I had, last week, I had a wife come into my office in tears in the afternoon, Friday afternoon. Her husband was being released from Gosnell. He had been there for five days. There was a glitch with the Mass Health transfer to a new common care provider. It was a subsidized plan. And he was supposed to go to a treatment facility. This was the plan. You go to Gosnell for five days, and then you go to the treatment facility in Arlington. Arlington said, we won't take the individual because of the status of the, of the health plan. And Gosnell said, we have to free up the bed right now, and they discharged him, but, but held him in the building at the time. And so all afternoon, we were on the phone. We called the treatment facilities. We called Cape Cod Healthcare. Obviously, parallel track, we were calling Mass Health to figure out, is there something with the insurance side that we can fix so that we can get him all the way to Arlington where he belongs and where the plan was for him to go? We tried the picassit, it was a dual diagnosis situation. So we said, can we use a mental health bed at the Picassit Mental Health Center? Long story short, we were able to find a bed after a discharge that happened during the process of which we were trying to find a resolution on the Cape, and the individual was able to, to go to the Cape Cod Behavioral Health Center as they worked out the transfer and the long-term placement up in Arlington. But it's happening every day. And so the beds-
I mean, it's a start, but it's not enough, obviously.
And we got to continue to-
Desperately need more beds.
Yep.
No question.
You know, and beds that are not, you know, for high income. You, there aren't enough anyway, but, you know, if you're, have the resources, you're a better shot than people that don't have the resources.
Yeah, from the private pay.
People don't have the resources. There's just not enough.
Yeah.
No question.
And so preventing the need for the bed is the, is the primary prevention piece, which there is some components in this bill as well. One of the, one of the sticking points between the two versions is there's this survey program, the intake of sort of a red flag of young people called SEBRT. And it was in the Senate version, but it wasn't in the House version. And the reason why it didn't make the House version is because of the breadth of the training necessary and requiring all students at a certain grade level to go through the screening process without funding. It becomes a huge unfunded mandate on the school systems. And so while I'm a supporter of providing schools with the resources to identify early and to help with primary prevention issues, I can't tell the school systems that they have to take on tens of thousands of dollars worth of screenings without being able to provide them financial assistance to do that. So we're grappling with that as to how this gets in that bill, particularly related to funding, because it's not a funding bill.
And finally, you know, you can't legislate common sense.
No.
A family member had to go into an ER situation, turned out to be a bruise on a break. They got sent home with 20 opioid painkillers for a bruise. You know, the whole notion of, you know, the prescription writing is out of control. And so, you know, I think the governor's, governor's initiative to limit prescribing down to a much smaller amount for the first three days. I understand the difficulty for some people to get back to a physician, and there needs to be some type of common sense ability under certain circumstances to do longer. But to send somebody, you know, give a 10-day supply for nothing-
I think we're going to see somewhere between three and seven, I think, is where we're at right now.
You know, I encourage you and your colleagues to go shorter rather than longer with, because, you know, then you just have all these pills in circulation, and they're around, and people know they're around. And you tell somebody, I got one, and then they tell somebody else who has a problem, and all of a sudden, they're in your house. And just, you know, cut it off the supply when it's not needed.
280 million opioid pills on the streets.
More pills than people in this country.
In this Commonwealth, 280 million last year in Massachusetts. So on that note, let me just do, I'll hit my last little one. The Fire Academy, you may have seen some issues in the newspaper over the last couple of months. We had a meeting with the, our regular legislative meeting with the fire chiefs last Friday, and I hosted along with Chief, former Chief Tucker, who's helping manage the Fire Academy now under the new leadership, a site visit, because most of the delegation hadn't been to the Fire Academy. And so I think there was, at the end of the meeting, there was a unanimous agreement that we obviously need to deal with any environmental issues that have existed out at the academy in the past, but that a commitment to having fire training available to our local Cape departments and the island departments somewhere in the county. And I think that we're getting towards agreement that the location is the, is the correct location in the mid-Cape, but having to deal with those issues of the groundwater. We made, I think, some big strides on Friday, understanding the delegation, what's going on out there, reading the report that Joe Maruka and the committee that was appointed last year by the county did, to say, look, there are some things out here that we need to clean, just like the base. We didn't ask the military to leave. We went out, and we addressed the issue, and we made sure that practices moving forward were done in an appropriate environmentally sensitive manner. And I think we need to do the same, to ask our departments and Chief Rulo and his folks to go all the way to Springfield or Stowe to be able to get training, which in many cases is not mandated, but is important. They're mandated to do their updates of their paramedic training and their EMT training and all of that, but the regular firefighting skills, the ones that we don't use a lot on the Cape. The firefighters, as you know, the majority of your calls are medical calls. And so making sure that they're safe and they're trained and they have the adequate resources, I think, is so important. So we are going to work to advocate for the DVS, the Department of Fire Services, DFS, excuse me, DFS, to participate with us in the regional training. We learn through this process that every regional fire academy in the Commonwealth has state support except for Cape Cod. We just didn't know it. No one ever brought it to our attention. You know, it was operating, and nobody was saying that they weren't operating well. And we're like, wait a second, how come there's a commitment everywhere but here? So we met with Marshall Cohn, who just retired, Marshall Ostrowski, who's the new marshal. I called him the Saturday before his Monday taking the job, gave him a copy of the Marshall County report, spoke to him about our advocacy to make sure that there's some parity around helping these regional academies. And so we'll be working to do that moving forward so that you don't have to try to come up as a municipality with the resources necessary to send your folks to be trained out in Stowe and Springfield now is the-
Can I make one request? If you're going to get state resources to help keep that facility open, make them get rid of the old foam that contains the-
So that was why I-
The contaminants of, because they, as explained to me at SLUGLON Association meeting a couple of weeks ago, yeah, we have it. It's expensive, so we're using it up. Well, if it's the source of the contamination, stop using it.
So what, so what has been used most recently, and I actually used to do some training out there with the sheriff's office and our cert teams, what's being used now is dish soap, which is mixed with water and creates the foam characteristics of Class B firefighting foam that can be folded and used. And so there was an incident at the academy, and there was some chemical testing that came back that showed that some of the contaminants of emerging concern, which are in our dish soaps at home. Okay? And so in 2000, about 2006, the academy stopped using Class B firefighting foam and moved over to using dish soap. Now, dish soap does still have these-
They still have the Class B on site.
So.
They still have Class B at the, at the location.
They're not using it for training.
They should get rid of it.
Yeah. No, you're right. And, and I didn't see any on site, so I'll have to find out where it is, because I know that-
The chief told me.
Okay.
He still has.
Which chief? Maruka?
From- From-
West Barnstable?
West Barnstable.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll have a-
Get rid of it.
Fallout conversation out there, because, yeah, we could transport that stuff offsite quickly, and we will if it's still there.
Yeah.
The last one is Farley Bog. You'll be having a presentation in a couple of weeks from the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club and their affiliated foundation. We had the opportunity to present earlier this week to the Mashpee Conservation Commission and got a unanimous endorsement of the concept to move forward. Falmouth Board of Selectmen and the Falmouth Conservation Commission have voted unanimously to move the concept forward. And so, when you see the presentation, it will be relative to the Child's River watershed and the shared ownership between the town of Mashpee and the town of Falmouth over the Farley Bog. Growers, you know, pulled out a number of years ago, and there's no plans on either side to, to rebid the cranberry growing there. And so, we've partnered up with, not only the, the Rod and Gun Club is taking the lead on this, but we've partnered up with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the State Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. They've been at the meetings and looking at the proposals, and USDA has done some in-kind surveying and services for us. So, I look forward to, to being back with the Rod and Gun Club to present that project to you in a few weeks.
All right, good, David. Anybody have any other questions for?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming in.
It's always good.
If you ever need anything when I'm not in, don't hesitate to call. I know town manager, assistant town manager, when they've got an issue, we, we communicate. And so, whenever something bubbles up, let us know, and we'll, we'll get it on top of it.
We will. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and our last topic of the evening under new business will be review of the draft annual and special May town meeting warrants. I think where our chairman, John Cahillan, is not here tonight, we'll defer possibly the-
When do, when do you need this approved by us?
For dates.
Do we have time?
Yes.
We do.
I don't have my calendar.
Yeah, I didn't see anything of any particular, highly ordinary concern. Could we get, when we do talk about it, we have Mary Bradbury in to talk about this disc golf proposal.
Oh, the disc golf, okay.
You want her at the next meeting?
Sure.
Whenever.
That would be good.
If we're going to talk about it, then, yeah.
Do I have a motion?
Well, wait, we have to announce, tomorrow's Carol's birthday.
Ah.
I'm going to let you off.
Uh-huh. Now, do I have a motion?
Motion, we adjourn.
Second motion.
Everybody go vote tomorrow.
Yes.
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 Wish Carol happy birthday, both.